We're going to call this meeting to order. Determine there's a quorum present. Don't see Commissioner Wardlaw, Commissioner Vazquez is here, Commissioner Nettleton, Commissioner Flores and myself. We have a quorum. Commissioner Nettleton, if you would please lead us in the pledge of allegiance circuit.
I plead allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If y'all don't mind, Jesse Fernandez passed away, I think, yesterday. Probably a moment of silence for him. He was actually one of my baseball coaches. So, if y'all don't mind, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank y'all. He's a good person. Item four approving or amending minutes from the previous move?
I didn't get any, I didn't hear any, but I did.
Get your audience. He's already signed. All right, sir. You come online, second. All right, sir, you're online.
Okay, I didn't see any minutes either. One minute.
Morning, Judge, morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. For the record, Commissioner Wardlaw has joined us. Citizens' comments, we have none. Approving subdivision plants?
Item thirteen.
Okay. It's on item thirteen? Okay, so we'll wait. Item seven, approving subdivision compliance? Approving monthly reports from elected officials?
Move.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second. Commissioner Vazquez? Who's secondary?
Yes.
Okay.
Second judge.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Approving bills for payment?
Move.
I have a second.
Second judge.
Second Commissioner Vazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. If y'all don't mind, we'll go to item fourteen real quick. Individual from the base. Sorry about their dog. Item fourteen, authorization for county judge to sign Defense Economic Adjustment Assistant Grant applications for Loughlin Airport. Loughlin applications and documentation prepared by Marco. Berlin, what's your last name?
Keno.
The what?
Keno.
Keno, okay.
Motion to approve, authorize a judge to sign.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second. Commissioner Vazquez, did y'all want to come up and say something? Y'all good? Do you? Okay, come on up. We have a motion in a second and they're going to go and say something real quick.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Marco Prohan from Public Works at Loughlin Air Force Base. I'm here with Lieutenant Colonel Emily Arthur, Business Support Group Deputy. Thank you guys for your time. What we're here and ask, just to go into a little bit of detail, is to request funding for two projects through the DACT, the Defense Economic Adjustment Assistant Grant through the state of Texas. The application is due at the end of this month and we're requesting two different amounts for two different projects. First one being the T-1 sunshade. So, similar to the ones that y'all helped us build for the T-6 aircraft, we're requesting two rows of T-1 aircraft. Currently, Loughlin Air Force Base is constructing three other rows, but we do not have enough funds to complete the other two that we originally intended. And that comes at a price of about $2 million. And the other project is the airfield lighting vault system. This one's a little interesting. The lighting vault controls the systems for the lighting on the airfield and these lightings are used for night operations, which are mandatory in our pilot training program. But also during inclement weather, these become pivotal, as you can imagine. And we have inclement weather for about 150 days of the year. Therefore, to ensure pilot safety, these systems cannot fail. We have gone and requested through the Air Force, but it's been trial and error and we are requesting through DACT to repair the system, which includes valves and regulators that are no longer produced by the manufacturer. Therefore, you can see our penumbra, whatever the system fails, it takes two, three months to get back up. So much so that the actual manufacturer asked us to give the regulators back because it's at a museum quality. Yeah, it's a little frustrating at times, but we're also, we're asking about $2.3 million for the airfield lighting vault, which amounts to about 23% of the overall effort to fix the lighting repair, lighting system at Loughlin Air Force Base. And we're requesting $2 million for the T-1 sunshades, which amounts to about 36% of the overall effort to construct the T-1 sunshades that we need. Any other questions?
No, we're good. Did you need to say something?
I know, I just want to say on behalf of Colonel Prater, just thank you for your continued support for these projects that we really need.
No, and anything else we can help, as you saw, just took a motion and we're fixing to take a vote and it's all good. We're here to help. All right?
Thank you, Judge.
Thank y'all. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Five-zero vote. Item number ten, auditor's report.
Motion to approve.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Morning. I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second. Thank y'all. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Budget adjustment from available appropriations, A, building maintenance utilities. And we did budget more money in this next budget, so hopefully we'll be having these at the end of the year.
I'll make a motion to approve and to... Are we going to need additional money, Matt? To cover the rest, anything else that may be governing?
Correct. If you want to go down to $10,000, that would be good.
And do we have, well?
I'm sorry, you broke up, bro. Squawked out, hip rose. Okay. Unfortunately, unfreezes. Not really, huh? Huh?
That could be a lot.
He's pretty good at playing the freeze game. He ain't moving.
The whole thing froze.
We got to, was there going to be enough? If we needed more money, that's where we ended. And he said yes.
Okay, all, we have leftover funds out of last year's budget in building maintenance?
I'm sure we do somewhere. In equipment maintenance, there's $42,000.
I'll make a motion that we take money left over out of building maintenance and to move it into utilities in the amount of... What'd you say, we had $14,000?
Forty-two. $42,000.
Move $20,000 over.
Okay.
To utilities.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, to move $20,000 over to utilities from building maintenance. I have a second. Second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wardlaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Item B, attorney's $6,556.18.
Motion to approve out of contingency. Or other, do we have any other attorney we find out of?
No, we don't. But contingency would be a good place for this.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, to move it out of contingency. And second, Commissioner Vazquez.
Second judge.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Non-departmental section, 125, $241.50. Matt, what is this?
Contingency. Oh, forgive us, we contingency, this is just where our cafeteria plants on our health insurance.
Motion to approve out of available funds of contingency.
I have a motion, Commissioner...
I will second that.
I have a notion, a notion. A motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Vazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Auditor, $550 from office to capital expenditures.
Move.
Second.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Vazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Auditor special, equipment to capital expenditures, $7,040. I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second.
Second.
Commissioner Wardlaw. What are we buying? What are we doing?
Yeah, we're collapsing that $7,040 into capital expenditures for a furniture in the new building.
Okay. I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Wardlaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero, five-zero vote. Auditor special supplies, $3,000. Auditor special contract labor, $2,500. Auditor's travel training, this is all the same thing.
Correct, we're all closing at that $7,000.
Move.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Vazquez. All those in favor?
Aye. What is contract labor?
Contract labor can be a lot of things. It's just contract labor that you assign.
It's just a line item that he has in there. And that was a dollar and a fourth. It could be anything from, if we needed to bring somebody in as an IT or anything, I'll work on the building.
Yes.
I will yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Item...
Yes.
We started a new fiscal year this year. Are we going to do what we've done before in the DA's budget? Freeze that budget to capital expenditures and limit expenditures?
The 25%, it already has been since, well, yes, we'll do the 25%. These special funds have already been frozen since the primaries, so we're fine now.
Is that freezing special funds too?
Yeah, freezing's kind of a bad word, but they are locked until court approval.
And all capital expenditures are locked?
I don't believe he has any capital in his budget, but the budget's, just like normal budgets, beginning fiscal year is limited to 25% of the budgeted amount.
Right.
Right? And then with these special funds, those would need court approval to make any sort of expenditure.
Okay.
Item twelve, treasurer's report.
Is this the one we approved?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve. Okay.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Wardlaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Item thirteen, revision of plat, replat, 471, holdup pass lot three, Brighton State Ranch number one subdivision.
Motion to approve.
Second judge.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Vazquez. And then solid compliance.
Yes, at this moment, we're just seeking out the energy to post it on the county website for third days. And I'll need to bring it back.
And then this plat is in Commissioner Nettleton's and you already...
Yes, yes.
Okay. I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Vazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Item fourteen, we already did. The, Jesus Christ, the COVID, they're going to zoom in like around 9:30, 9:45. As soon as they zoom in, we'll come back to item fifteen, if y'all don't mind. Item sixteen, approved application for federal surplus program and assign authorized representatives. This is the surplus in San Antonio. What we usually do is do the commissioners, the foremans, the foreman for building maintenance and then Jerry Russ.
Make a motion to approve and authorize subdivision.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second.
Second judge.
Second, Commissioner Wardlaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Approving commenced construction on Pandale and Dolan Road using county transportation infrastructure funding. I think both of y'all also received a text or an email from Carl Escher's, the dollar amounts. I have a motion, Commissioner...
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Nettleton, second.
Aye.
Commissioner Wardlaw. Y'all will need to sort of use y'all's money first and then get reimbursed. Right? Okay. I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Wardlaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. No action needed on number eighteen. Nineteen, approval and adopt. This year, 2020, 2021, Texas Insurance and Defense Commission Formula Grant Resolution.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second.
Aye.
Second, Commissioner Wardlaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Okay. Item twenty.
Judge, I would like to make a motion, approve October's breast cancer awareness in honor of my late wife and in honor of your wife, Sylvia Owens.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Vazquez. I'm going to go ahead and read this real quick. Proclamation declaring October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a worldwide annual campaign in October involving thousands of organizations to highlight the importance of breast cancer awareness education. Yeah, I'm not going to be able to get through. I have a motion, have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Item twenty-one. Recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month?
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
I will second that.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Vazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Item twenty-two, resolution regarding the city of Delrayon and Christian. Sorry about that. Social services for the Hillary Texas Department of Agribusiness Grant. Texans feeding Texans. This is an annual thing that we do.
Motion.
And a motion, Commissioner Nettleton?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wardlaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Item twenty-three, award RST 20-006 for geotechnical testing of Protero construction. to Millennium Engineers Group. Funding to be decided by commissioners' court.
Judge, I make the motion that...
That we award this geotechnical testing to Millennium Engineers Group and to pay from that special account that money has satisfied.
Okay.
And then get reimbursed down the road.
We have a motion, Commissioner Flores, Commissioner Nettleton. You got a question?
How much is it? How much is a contract?
$420?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was for the 160 testing. Yeah, 160 something.
$162,701.
Can you say it again? I was talking over you, I'm sorry.
$162,701 is what the fixed rate is for...
And where are we going to get the funding?
We have $3.8 million coming in from, coming in from the state, state money. And then part of that 1.7 million that we were going to borrow, that we'll have to do a resolution to, to be able to, any funds that we spend to come back and reimburse ourselves, we'll need to do that one. But this one can come out of that $3.8 million.
Judge, my understanding, and I don't mean Matt disagrees, but I believe we are supposed to do the resolution of intent to reimburse prior to any contracts or any expenditures.
If, if we were going to use some of that money, what we're waiting on right now is the bigger contract, so if we needed to expend any funds out of that...
Don't we still have 300 and something thousand we'd issued prior to this in a tax note?
We have like 300 or 200? Should be 300. 300? It's 300. We do have 300 and someone thousand. Would you feel more comfortable taking out of that?
No, 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 it's fine. I just want to make sure we have the funding because we're going to come up short about $2 million from this project.
And what we'll do, the following meeting, we'll have more information from the Senor as to when our timeline is. I think the concern has always been that we do have a res, that we pass a resolution to make sure that if we go to borrow money, we can get reimbursed. So we'll do that in two weeks.
I would like us to relook at that instead of that 1.7 in a tax note. If we're going to refinance part of that SC Ranch in CO, maybe we could just throw that into the CO instead of doing it in a tax note.
Yeah, and I think we, when we looked at that, they wanted us to do two different notes. Was a recommendation from the Senor. But we'll bring all that back to you. Okay. I have a motion, Commissioner Flores, second.
Aye.
Second, Commissioner Nettleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Item twenty-four, approve and award no damage root prepared for Valverde County Judicial Center to err on roofing drews. Government Cooperative PIPs, PIPS, contract number 200201 in the amount of $114,218.50. Funding is available in site 14-D-VB C Judicial Center account. I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Wardlaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Item twenty-five, prepare the items submitted as surplus property improper disposition decisions made, but not limited to, to be auctioned, reassigned, recycled or destroyed. Caterpillar motor grader, 1993 Ford dump truck, 1988 Peterbilt Model 377, a 1994 Ford 561, a 1993 Ford tractor, LA414C, a 1993 Ford dump truck and a 2008 BMY cargo truck.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Wardlaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote.
Okay.
Item twenty-six, Carson Barnes to have a circus at the fairgrounds with the option of using the big arena or the open field on November 14th and November 15th. Motion to approve.
Are we going to keep separation or whatever we need to on this?
What we, what we've done is we made a motion to approve as long as they can follow local health authority standards. If they can't follow the standards, then it doesn't work.
Sorry, motion to approve. Do they follow the health standard?
I have a motion, Commissioner Flores. I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion, Commissioner Flores, second, Commissioner Nettleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Approval of lease agreement between Valverde County and the Fall Drive in Music Fest, FIP, Fest, El Bike Edward. I don't have a, y'all have a date on this? I know that there was a concern about the date.
Judge, good morning.
Hold on one minute.
I'm sorry, can y'all hear me?
I, can y'all hear him now? Go ahead, Edgar.
Item twenty-seven, Edward's call to cancel B-19 at Fairgrounds, that's wrong.
Okay, no need then. Okay?
No, sir.
All right. Item twenty-eight, lend or rent county fairground stage to Edward Nunnus for the private event Fall Drive in Music Fest is not hosted at the Valverde County Fairgrounds and said stage rental fee. We've, we've, we've let the Casa Cultura because I think they're a part of us. They actually have a line item in our agenda, in our budget. We've let the city use it. I don't think we've ever let a private entity, as far as I, as far as I...
There's other private companies that will lease out stages. I understand those helping other organizations like ours. I don't think we need to get into business competing against private companies that do this.
I make a motion that be denied?
Second.
I have a motion, Commissioner Wardlaw, second, Commissioner Nettleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody again? Five-zero vote. Item twenty-nine, authorizing Sheriff Joe Frank Martinez to accept two weapons from Walmart?
Move.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, by...
I'll second it for discussion.
Second, Commissioner Flores.
Are they AR-15 weapons or what do you get?
No, sir, one's a 12-gauge shotgun and the other's a 243 rumor rifle that they did not function properly. They've been repaired and they're in the armory at the sheriff's office. Thank you, Sheriff. Any other questions? We have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Flores. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Item thirty, authorizing Sheriff Joe Frank Martinez to purchase 15 body cameras for $9,600 out of operating line item. Motion to approve.
Can we not get grants from the sheriff?
There was no grant available specifically for this. I think the court has previously had to issue the funds to purchase these cameras. I think we're just replacing cameras at this time.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion already, Commissioner Flores. I need a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Nettleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I, five-zero vote. Item thirty-one, approval of payment for random and new hire drug testing to be taken out of contingency account.
Did we not budget for this in, in the budget?
Evidently, we didn't.
No, we did not.
This is something that...
We've never budgeted that. It's always been come out of contingency, but...
How much do we usually spend on it? Is she here or not?
No, she is. Juanita. You need to unmute? Maybe. Well, do you know, Matt?
I know it's a nominal amount, Commissioner. It's not a lot, but...
I don't want to have to come back, so how much do we need to put in?
Well, I think that's what she's, I think that's what she's requesting. She's requesting that all of these drug testings for the new hires to come from the contingency account, I believe is what she's asking.
Do we have a dollar amount more left, give or take?
I couldn't see any more than a $2,000.
I'll make a motion to move to put 2,500 for now in the account of drug testing.
And she just sent a text, let's see what it says.
Okay.
$1,300.
All right, I'll amend my motion to be $1,300.
Okay. So to reserve...
Out of contingency into the line item for drug testing.
We don't have a line item for drug testing. I think that was the issue.
Whatever line item this we use.
We've been using contingency. So this is what...
You set aside $1,300, that way they don't have to come back to the court.
Correct. That's what she's asking.
Would that be okay, Commissioner Nettleton?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second. Second. Second, Commissioner Wardlaw. And I don't know if she can hear us, but Juanita. Next time, we need to, please, please do this through the budget. That way... I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Wardlaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Item thirty two, agreement, Human Resource Monthly Report from September thirtieth, twenty twenty to October thirteenth, twenty twenty. I have a motion, Commissioner Flores. Uh, I have a second by.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nettleton, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero vote. Uh, Jesus Christ. Thirty minutes and they're gonna come on at nine forty five. Let's take a little break if y'all don't mind, and then I'll check and see if I can get the docs on the line so we can do Zoom. Y'all mind, we'll take a little five minute break. Y'all okay with that?
I'm good. I mind, Judge. Too early, Mike?
Too early.
Hey, you sound a little bit like Donald Trump, something.
Y'all ready?
Okay.
It is, uh, nine forty three or something like that. Call this meeting back to order. Yeah, we're gonna go back to item. Item fifteen, discussing matters relating to COVID. One of the things that, that, uh, we'd set aside some funds in contingency to be able to help, uh, pay for some of the things that we're going through with COVID. Matt asked if we would consider go ahead and moving, uh, the last, when we got started, uh, in March, we'd set aside two hundred thousand dollars uh, for COVID, if we could move two hundred thousand dollars out of contingency to go to COVID. If, uh, the court would consider that, and that way we can start this year with that.
I thought we set aside?
We set aside, uh, we put an extra, we put extra funds in contingency for it. But if we set aside some funds, uh, just for COVID, then we don't have to be coming back all the time.
Do we not have grant money left or not?
We do not have grant money left. We are getting, get reimbursed, and we set invoices to the city and to the school already to, to get reimbursed, uh, for our contract tracers. I think one of them was, it started July, gonna say twenty seventh, and I think the other one was August eighteenth. The city's contract, I think, was August eighteenth.
Or August nineteenth.
August nineteenth, and then the, this, with the school, it was, uh, July twenty seventh. So we have sent bills for the two tracers for the cit, for the school, and for the other four tracers plus the nurse to the city.
What's our balance?
We've not got back, sir.
What's our balance in contingency?
When we, when we started this year, we set aside, uh, five hundred and then five, five hundred regular, your company.
Balance, contingency, about, uh, one point two. One point two.
One point two.
Five seven zero zero.
Make a motion to move two hundred thousand dollars in the COVID fund out of contingency.
Second.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, Second Commissioner Flores, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero vote. The other deal. Okay, we've got Loura on the waiting list, we're gonna go ahead and put her in, and bring her in. Okay. She's connecting. There she is.
Good morning.
Good morning. How y'all doing?
How's it going?
Uh, doing good. Doctor, uh, one of the things that we've not talked about, and, uh, last week the governor had signed an order, uh, to allow bars to open to fifty percent. Uh, you know, we've had conversations with you and Dr. J J and with Roland, and, uh, even some of the commissioners. I mean, my opinion is, is that we try to figure out a way for them to open. Uh, and there's a lot of guidelines that the governor sent out, set out. One of them was fifty percent. The other one is, uh, they have to close, uh, by eleven or at eleven. Uh, the six foot distancing, so many people at a table, uh, nobody at the bar standing. Uh, there was, there was a lot of restrictions that the governor put out, and, you know, my opinion is, is that we, 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 we open them. I mean, you know, if we can, if we can, you know, get them to, to abide by the guidelines, my opinion would be that we open them. Uh, you know, I don't know what the commissioners think. Uh, I, I will tell you that we, we have had, uh, the ones that are open, that actually have a bar in there, I mean, they found a loophole, uh, and I know I'm gonna get phone calls because, you know, I'm throwing rocks at them, but it is what it is. They have found a loophole in order to be able to open, and the ones that, that really didn't go look for a loophole or whatever, try to, you know, just completely abide by the rules, they're closed. Uh, you know, they're not outselling hot dogs and burgers trying to make it now a food establishment in order to sell alcohol. Uh,
I-
But go ahead.
I agree, Judge, that you, you need to figure out a way to get them open. Um, while I believe that opening bars statewide will be a complete disaster like it was the last time, but if we don't allow our people to open, the people in this community are just gonna go to communities that have bars that are open, and the only one that's gonna get hurt is going to be our business owners in this community. Um, I think it's awful ironic that when we started this, we had COVID under control, and the governor decided to take all of our authority away and do it his way, and created a complete and utter disaster. Now he's dumping it back on the local counties for a deal with us. Um, he would have let us do what we needed to do in the beginning, we probably wouldn't be where we're at today, is what it is. But, um, I, I don't think we need to punish our local businesses because the bars are gonna open around the state, and people are gonna do what they did the last time, and they're gonna go to all these other communities and bring it back home. I just pray to God that everybody understands that they need to be safe when they're going out, and be cautious when they come home and not bring stuff home to their family members and stuff like that. That's all I have.
Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Wardlaw, do you have anything?
Great, I think we should open it.
Uh, Commissioner Vasquez?
Can we judge opening on them and just, you know, hoping everybody's safe and, uh, give it a little minimal?
Mr. Flores?
Well, uh, we have not a choice but to follow state, uh, rules, and if the governor opened it up to the, the whole state or the local government, I mean, I mean, we need to open them up.
Well, and, and we've had this conversation, and, and right now, uh, Dr. Loura, you know, I know that we've had, uh, you know, we were on the phone yesterday, uh, trying to figure out, and like I said yesterday, I said, this is one of the ones that I've really taken a lot of heat from, and when I say a lot of heat, it's from my wife, uh, you know, about opening them up. I mean, you know, we know, uh, let's, let's not be naive. Uh, every time you go to do something, you're going to have, uh, you're gonna have a little spike. It is, it is what it is. You know, we had it, we're having it with the school a little bit. Uh, we had it the last time that the governor opened up. Uh, there is a set of rules that they need to abide by. Uh, I guess our job is going to be to enforce the rules. Uh, but Dr. Loura, if you don't mind, I mean, give us your opinion.
Okay, so, I mean, as I told you yesterday, personally, I think it's a no. Like, everybody wants to open it, I think we can do it safely. So I know the governor has set up rules that the bars have to follow, but I think, in my opinion, I would personally like each bar to submit a COVID protocol so that we can analyze and see that it's actually functioning. Because to my experience here, people don't actually do what they're supposed to. So, I'm planning more on the enforcement part, you know, making sure that they are following what the protocol says, uh, that they're not using the dance floors, that their tables are distanced, that nobody's in the bar area, uh, that they do actually close at eleven. And by analyzing each bar's protocol, I think we can control a little bit better the situation, uh, because obviously it's not gonna be a hundred percent safe, but I, at least eighty-five percent safe, uh, I think I'm okay with it.
Okay. Well, let's do this, if, when we get, when we get off the, when we get out of Commissioner's Court here in a little bit, I'll give you a call, and I, like I said, we talked about it yesterday, of having every bar present a plan, and then to make sure that they understand what the rules have already been set out. Uh, there is, it isn't gonna happen overnight, it won't happen right away. Uh, it's one of those deals that we still have to send, uh, uh, fill out the paperwork, uh, through T A B C, and then get their approval. Uh, I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't for the simple reason that there's, there's two steps. And one of them is hospitalization rate, which we are below that. Uh, and then the other one is amount of cases that we're having, uh, we're below what their standards are. So, the, the, the two steps that they've put out, we're not above either one of them.
We gonna be able to shut things down if hospital rates go up and case loads go up and all that?
That's one of the things that we were talking with, with, uh, Ana, uh, our county attorney, was that, that, uh, we'll need to write a declaration before we open them up, and that way we sort of give ourselves the authority. The, the governor, bottom line is, the burden's gonna lie on us, the burden's gonna lie on the county judge's office. So we need to write a declaration and, and, uh, yes, we can. Answer to your question, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we're in a position that everything goes in the wrong direction, we have some ability to get it back up.
No, we, uh, we'll write a declaration, and then, uh, bottom line is, it's been, it's been put on our last. So yes, but we, we do have that ability to shut it down.
Are we gonna have, uh, the sheriff, are you gonna have the staff or the people, or is the city gonna help us with the, uh, regulating of these?
That's something that we talked about yesterday. Uh, you know, I, I think we could pay for all of our COVID if, uh, we had a, a group that started issuing citations, I think we'd have no problem paying for every day of our COVID, uh, expenses. Uh, so that's something, before we pull the trigger and say everybody can open up, that's gonna have to be part of this, this, uh, this discussion. Uh, yesterday when we were talking, uh, that's the big part of it, is that if you're gonna open them up, who's gonna enforce it? And, because realistically, uh, you have like your city health department, stuff like that. I mean, they're usually during the day. Uh, a, and really with the restaurants, when we're the ones we were having problems with, the problems were in the afternoon. So before we open them up, uh, we will need to discuss, uh, who's gonna enforce it, and if that's, can't be part of the puzzle, then I think we don't do it. Y'all okay with that?
I'm okay with that. Uh, you know, once you put something together, we can kinda look at it, we get some idea of what, what works.
Okay.
But we have to ask some steps in place. I mean, but, while I don't necessarily agree that it is the greatest idea, I, I think, well, we're gonna accomplish punishing our, our borrowers and everybody else who's in the open.
All right. Commissioners? Loura, do you have anything else?
So I do have a, a presentation of numbers, if you want me to show it.
Okay.
I just need to be made a hold.
She, she can't be made the holder, just hit, uh, share screen and I can allow.
Okay, can you tell? Can you tell?
Follow, if you just hit share screen, I should be able to allow you the-
I don't know about that, I can't hear.
I can ask you.
Yeah.
It's fixed in that.
If you just hit, um, share screen, I should be able to allow it? At the bottom of your, of your Zoom, there's a share screen button? If you hit on that.
On the hold now? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so if you hit on that, it should ask me to give you permission to share the screen.
I don't look at me, I don't know what you're doing. I hit delete. Is there a delete button anywhere?
Okay.
There we go.
So, uh, these were the, the numbers that were reported yesterday. As you can see, we're kind of sticking like a not killed trend the end of October. So before, we used to see like twenty cases a day, and then the next day was four, and then two, and then like fifteen again. So it kind of did like this up and down thing. But now, uh, we've had like twenty and then thirty-five yesterday. Um, and today, I think we're gonna be reporting more than twenty-two. Uh, usually wait a little bit longer for, uh, to, to first, but right now it's, it's over twenty. Uh, we had an additional death with stills expanding, uh, to understanding right now the state has confirmed most of them until the beginning of October. So, uh, the state still needs to analyze the October deaths. Uh, we're still at twelve, uh, twenty K, uh, in twelve K testing, uh, total testing, and the total number is two thousand three hundred and fifty. Uh, so the active cases kind of like still are in the low because we keep recovering them pretty fast. Uh, that's why we see like an eighty percent recovery rate. Um, but as the cases continue to increase, that active number is gonna go up. Uh, we still have the same thirty-five that we can contact, that we need to contact by email, I'll be in my mail. Um, I added the out of county transfers as you suggested last session. So we have currently two in the hospital here and twelve either in San Angelo or San Antonio. Um, and because of the one hundred and eighteen, uh, expired cases, we have a mortality rate of five point two, five point zero two percent. So, this is just like a zoom of the, of the chart. Just to say that you can see the trends. So let me explain. The yellow line is the number of daily new cases. Um, the red line is the cumulative deaths. So right now we're in one hundred and eighteen. That's why it's, it's increasing. And the number of daily new deaths is the area shaded in gray. So we had most of our deaths in July and August, uh, so in September, and then we'll see about October.
What's driving this spike?
Which, this, this one right now?
The, the yellow, yeah, the yellow line's going up with driving that.
So I think opening everything up again, obviously based on increasing trend in places. I also think people are not following city guidelines anymore. Uh, either they are overly over the virus, or they don't wanna hear about quarantine or testing. So, even with the school, I've seen that there's a lot of families that are sick, that they refuse to get their children tested, and they prefer to wait the quarantine, the quarantine days. Um, so, but they, they are still going out, or, so I've seen that, um, that the children are still being brought up to their classroom, even if they still appear as positive, so that race further is dead. You can go to restaurants, you can go to bars, you can see that people don't really follow the city guidelines as they should. So obviously, also being October and being flu season again, the kids are gonna obviously spike.
Are we seeing a spike in schools? How, how is that going, the schools opening?
So with schools opening, to be honest, it's been a little chaotic. Uh, right now, I know there was one case that was published in Facebook and in a newspaper, but there's more than one case. So, uh, the school and the school would be more, is gonna be more open about their cases, and either they're, they're confirmed, they're suspected, or they're exposed cases. Um, they're gonna publish information each Monday regarding how the week has gone through. So right now, there's six active cases, and the total, uh, total confirmed were ten from the start of, of October.
Are they gonna publish them by school, or how are they gonna do it?
Yeah, in the school webpage, that's what they do.
No, but I mean, are they gonna put which school, and how many cases in each school, or are they just gonna put?
I think they're just gonna do the total, but I don't know.
I, I would like to see it broke down by school so that the, the parents have an idea of what's going on in the school, that their children are going through.
We're trying, uh, to make each school, I mean, if there's a case that make sure that the kids are socially distanced, that they're wearing their mask, uh, that they don't mingle with each other, and it's possible that there's some kind of protection of, in between each student.
Because the only way, the only way we're gonna gain the trust of the public is to be honest about what's going on. And, and we have to, you, you have to let the public know what the issues are and where the problems are, and be honest. And then they can make the decisions about what they do or don't wanna do, but, you know, I mean, I hear about, I, I know there's cases in the school, but I've only seen one release, but, um, I, I think we need to inform the public of what's happening out there and what's going on, and then the public needs to make decisions about what they feel is safe or not safe.
Yes, and the school knows that, and, I mean, they're gonna, they're working on it. So, doing my, my job this time. Um-
No, no, I understand, I'm just making a comment.
Yeah. So, so yeah, and I think the problem right now is that, well, I thought that the students are gonna infect each other, but actually the parents are the ones that are giving it to the students. So, and we have several cases where the parents are positive, and then we have to take the child out. So if you consider the confirmed cases, they're mostly because of the parent giving it to the child, and then, um, and then sometimes the, the student doesn't test, so it just stays as an exposed case.
Are we seeing, are we seeing the kids get as sick as the parents or not?
No, no. So, uh, it's actually, uh, really weird because, well, we have at least a lot of students that are safe. So what we do is that when students or the parent reports, uh, the child being safe, we just give them and all the siblings, and then according to the symptoms and according to the situation, we kind of assess which way we should go. But we always recommend them to follow up with a doctor. Uh, once I know that a doctor has seen them and has analyzed this whole situation, either has, uh, done a strep test, flu test, COVID, or just ruled out everything else and decided it's allergies, but at least I have someone accountable of that student and his situation. So, once I get the note, I allow the family to go back. That's how it, it has worked.
What about teachers?
With teachers, same thing.
Are we seeing a, a, an issue with teachers getting infected or, or passing along to teachers through student?
Yeah, it's more like the parent gives the student, and the student gives the teacher. Uh, there's some teachers, obviously, that are positive because of family, but, but right now I think mostly we have quarantine teachers because of exposure to exposed students.
Are the teachers sick or just poor people?
I think there's some sick, but not all of them. Yeah, there's some small number that are sick, but most of them are just quarantine. So, and, and for symptom wise, um, you can see anything. So either like a full, whole symptom- So either like a full, whole symptoms, or some people just have like a sore throat and, well, some students are having a sore throat and congestion, a runny nose, and then they're COVID. So that's why we, we need to be very strict with everyone. I know parents are kind of angry about the school because they're quarantining kids, but that's the only way to do it, is to make it safe and to prevent further outbreaks.
One of the things that, that she put out right now, and I think we'll need to take into consideration, is that our, our cases right now are going up. So, I, I mean, it's, it, and I'm saying this because of the bars. We're not, the bars ain't going to be able to open tomorrow, open this week. You know, it, we're going to have to put a plan together and then we're going to have to get it out to the bars and then they're, they're going to have to come back and we're going to have to sit and visit and figure how this is going to work. This is not going to be something that's going to happen. And they're just going to be magically able to open this weekend or something like that. To be perfectly clear, it's, it's not going to work like that. And, you know, it's, and we're still, as much as we would like for them to open, I think all of us are of the same opinion, if our numbers continue to go up, then it just wouldn't make sense to throw another law on the fire and hope that it's not going to burn, not going to burn hotter even though that, you know, we opened something else up. And again, I mean, I, I think we're all, all of the same opinion. I mean, we, we want them to open, but it has to be, and it has to be safe. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we know we're going to get a little spike, but if our numbers continue to go up the way they're doing, it might not be possible. But again, Dr. Lourdes, you have anything else? I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, just, so this is just something that Roland Garza actually requested. So it's basically a comparison of both the counties that have similar demographic scenario to other counties, right? And just comparing their positivity rate and their mortality rate. So as you can see, well, obviously, we're like, we have the highest positivity rate. And I think the mortality, World County is a little bit above us, but it's like in the five range also. So I was kind of wondering why did we have all the, the highest positivity rate? And obviously, it goes directly to testing. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna change the, so here is like the numbers that made this graph. So as you can see, both these three, they have like way less cases than, than us. They still have almost 5,000 more tests than, than we do. So that makes the positivity rate go down. So this one, Jim Wells County, has 20,000 and the positivity rate is 7%. So I think we're now we're in 12,000, 12,000 something. So and we have almost double the cases of care and health.
One of the, one of the things on here, when, when we looked, when we also ran the numbers along the, I guess along the border. You take Eagle Pass, for example, their, their rate compared to population is higher than ours. You know, it, I'd ask, I'd ask them to run the numbers on, on populations and stuff like that, but I think it, it's really hard. It just depends, I guess, what number you're trying to come up with. But if you look at the numbers along the borders, Eagle Pass, down a little bit lower, they're going to be higher than us. You're going to have, you know, as you get away from the border, they're, they're not as high. But these are numbers that I've asked them and, and the individuals that have been calling about the bars, like I told them, we're trying to gather as much information as possible to make an educated decision. My opinion is we need to open, but, I mean, we, we need to do it sort of logically versus just trying to pull the trigger.
I think how, how the big cities are handling it is that people do wear masks at all times. You go to Antonio and Austin and everybody's wearing a mask and in restaurants, everybody's following their protocols. And I think that's the problem that we have. I mean, if we followed the rules, I think the cases would not be going up.
Well, and, and to that, you know, we eat almost at the same restaurants all the time during the week. And one of them that we went to when they opened up 75%, the manager comes up and says, oh, we're going to put up shields between the, the booths. Well, yeah, hell, that don't, that don't help right now for the simple reason that you're already at 75% and you ain't got no shield between the booths. Just because the governor said that you could go to 75%, you still have to follow social distancing. You still have to follow the rules. And that restaurant, until they put the shields between the booths, we will not be going back. You know, one of them had it and then the other one that they didn't. But you know, they, they know what they're supposed to be doing. They're just not doing it. You know, and, and this, this goes in line to what you said, Doctor, Doctor, I mean, you know, they're not following the rules. They're just not, they're not following the rules. Doc, you have anything else?
Do we need to do something to increase testing or what?
Well, they're bringing in some kiosks also and they did free testing this weekend, right, Doc?
So yes, so we had a free testing event this last Saturday. We had 300 tests, which is good, which is like a, you had a good.
Turned out.
The cumulative of the previous test was 280 and maybe something and we beat that record in one day, so that's good. I think mostly the cases that we had were because of school, because I was kind of forcing people to test that they can go back to school. And we are installing three kiosks from the same company that is just an oral swap. In three strategic points in the Rio, and we are going to promote that soon once we confirm the addresses and the time that the kiosk can start working. So it's going to be free testing, oral swaps for two weeks for anyone that, that wants to get tested.
What's the turnaround on the results for that?
So this Saturday, they told us one to five days and we've seen, we've had the majority of them come by day two or three, but we still have some of them that are still coming in today. Usually do five day stops.
Is there any hope, is there any hope of getting a more rapid test system put together?
So if we do the PCR based system, no. So it's two, three days max.
So there's nothing coming down the pipe that you would be able to get immediate results like you would with a flu swap or a strep throat or something like that?
Not currently. The only rapid tests right now are the antigen tests or the antibodies, but the CDC doesn't recommend those to be diagnostic.
Because it appears to me the only way to finally get this thing where you can kind of control it is if you have immediate results where you can test people before they go into establishments or into schools or stuff like that and get immediate results whether they have symptoms or not.
Of course, but that hasn't been developed yet.
The, Doc, the results, I had on the results on testing, we had up to 12. Is that, is that, is that changed out of the 300 that were tested positive?
Yeah. I, when they sent us the results yesterday, I noticed that there's 270 results there and there's 12 that came positive from there. The two of them were B tests, so we don't have, so 10.
10?
But I still found out about other, two more cases that were positive that are still being reported. So we're still working on the total number of positives from the testing.
Okay. All right. Do we have anything else?
We're talking about these four, empty four.
You know, I was asked that question yesterday. I'm trying, I'm trying to find out a total number. I wish I had the number for you. I will tell you that we had probably about nine different people called since Thursday of last week wanting to open up. I will get y'all that number. I started working on it yesterday, but I, I can't tell you the true number. If I told you, it'd be a lie. I don't know. Lourdes, Doc, do you have anything else?
No answer for me. I know Dr. Jager was gonna join.
Yeah, I didn't, he didn't, he didn't come in? Okay. I'm, I'm just being told that he is not, he's not joined, so. Y'all have anything else? Commissioners?
I'm okay, man.
Dr. Lourdes, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you for joining our meeting.
You too. Item 33, executive session, unless, y'all need executive session? We don't, any of the commissioners need an executive session?
No.
No?
I don't.
Okay. Then we don't have anything for executive session. Commissioners comments? Judges' comments? I've got a couple. One of them is that I received a letter from the Texas Commission on Jail Standards, basically R.J. It was addressed to Warden Christopher Martinez. Is that right? We are in compliance with our last letter. It was actually a pretty nice letter that, that we're in compliance. And we got our certificate, so I just want to congratulate the sheriff and the warden for, for a great job. Thank you. The other deal is, yesterday I had the housing authority come in and give us a certificate of appreciation for everything that we've done in, in COVID, during this COVID operation. So again, the housing authority did come in yesterday, give us, present us with a certificate of, of appreciation. So to the, to the court, thank y'all for everything that y'all are doing. You know, like I was telling, telling Isidro yesterday, this is sort of, you know, there was no template for everything that we've been through. It was just a lot of trying to get it done. I will tell you that when our first case popped up at one of the housing authority's facilities, we thought it was going to set off a firestorm. And with everything, with everybody working together, it was pretty much isolated. I think we had in that one facility, two cases. The sheriff, we, we're actual, I think the biggest problem we had is having, trying to keep one of the individuals clothed. That was right. And keep him from running around completely in his birthday suit. But other than that, it, we just, it was, you know, it was one of those deals that it worked out. The food drive that y'all have done, all of y'all have done is, is really impressive and it's greatly appreciated. Again, I just want, I want to commend the court, commissioners, staff. Thank y'all so much.
Judge Almay, a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you there?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. As you know, I know Isidro very well and the work that they've been doing. And I know that he appreciates Commissioner Vasquez very much because they coordinated in that precinct to actually deliver food to people who were either sheltered or homebound. So thanks to the county, yes, it's a pulling. Commissioner Vasquez, thank you for helping out the housing this one.
You're welcome. No problem.
Thank y'all. I don't have anything else. This meeting's adjourned. You know, I, well, I'm going to say it's adjourned. I, I, cancer, you know, we, we did the breast cancer deal, but it's just, it's cancer. The shit's just bad. I don't care whether it's can, whether it's breast cancer or pancreas or whatever. Shit's just bad. So the people that have passed, our prayers go out to them. And this meeting's adjourned. Y'all have a good day.